Mr. Arena. By Master Paul.
He's on the bathroom floor.
Mr. Is Tesci.
Here.
Pleasure to be here, please.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was announced to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice out and to attend public meetings of public bodies that are generally business affecting their interests, discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provisions of the Act, the Montel Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montel Township Municipal Building, all Montel Public Schools, the Montel Public Library, the Montel Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the board's official newspaper on June 23rd, 2021.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Plonk. Billups? It's easier to make a decision than Bill.
So against athletics, boys' basketball season is beginning tonight, and my day is coming up. Ian fellow captain John Walsh will be the counter group into the season beginning tonight with a home step against Morristown High School. After the season beginning tonight, so the home. I would encourage.
The road's set for spring is just fine.
The road's path for the government last Friday, they picked up a 73 to 66 home win against Bochum. Senior grade two offense, which is off to a great start, putting 15 points to go along the fences, and we got 16. The bowling team is rolling again as they got off the ceiling seven no start this season after already capturing the N Jack tournament title. They will take on Bover tomorrow afternoon. The hockey team celebrated great senior night this past day as they honored their captain's great rest in state units, who thanked the boys for their hard work over the last four years. The next game will be tomorrow for Bover. The wrestling team had great success this past weekend as they tended to dart overall as the more performance. They saw huge wins from heavyweight Mo Dever and junior David Monaco. Other notable finishes came from Derek Pirdano, Justin Goliata, hockey team will be open to attendance. They compete next on Thursday afternoon versus North. Winter practice is early this season and will rise as they travel to University of Pittsburgh tomorrow for our party educational. The swim team has had a great season. The swim team has a great early season success as they have had deep contribution to cross the world, both the captains and the underclassmen. The next game will not be until after November.
Thank you, Billups. Thank you very much. And you might be leaving, which is very happy holiday. I'm going to thank you for keeping us updated, which is appreciated. Any questions for Billups? Okay, thank you, Billups. Renee?
I just wanted to note that the board has scheduled a separate special meeting on Tuesday, February 8th, at which time we'll have a presentation on our most recent demographic study by Dr. Britt. It will be a community study and certainly be able to answer any questions that board members or public may have. That meeting will involve students in high school and elementary and secondary. I would now like to turn things over to Dr. Shorter for his presentation on the Start Strong.
Thank you, Renee. Everybody mentioned, I'm going to power through a number of slides for you to reference as I do. We move to the slides, talk a little bit about what the Start Strong assessment is, the purpose of it, and also I'll share some of the outcomes and results that we gathered and some way of how we're using it. Let's start off first talking a little bit about, you know, what is the test? My primary focus of the Start Strong was to give us really information, to give the teachers on the front lines information about, you know, where we see students and their current level of performance and what type of supports some of our students might need. It's administered at the beginning of the school year, which if you recall, yearly, we have standardized testing for the most part of NJSLA in the spring every year. This was a little bit different. This was a compliance-based test by the state of New Jersey since the state showed not to test last spring, the obvious concerns with the pandemic. There was an agreement that we would move our assessments to the fall, use it as a valid assessment for teachers to use to get a sense of where students are at, basically gaps that made the course of the pandemic. So it was given in October, and it's aligned to specific standards from the previous pre-level high school course. So it's really measuring progress material for the students as they approach the new courses in the fall. A couple of points that I think are important. Again, like I mentioned, to provide levels of support as we think students need. The test helps us indicate what students need, you know, varied levels of support. Strong support needed, a little supported, and a lot more about that. Like any of these standardized state tests, I think every year I make a point to say this is one piece of data. It's one piece of data that we add into our bucket and toolbox of other pieces of data that we gather in the course of a class, whether it be tests, quizzes, our eye-ready assessment sessions across the day level. We try to gather as much information as we possibly can on each student to figure out what their needs are and how we can structure our instruction for them. This differs a lot from the assessment that we give in the spring typically, the NJSLA. It's not intended to predict student performance, future sum of assessments. It's a much shorter test, it's not as involved and not as comprehensive as the test that we typically give in the spring or the school year. One of the measures that the Start Strong uses is a level-based measurement. Our NJSLA test that we administer every year, if you recall, involves five levels of assessment. The Start Strong narrowed it down, you know, probably because it's a much shorter test, into three levels. So based on student performance, we know whether a strong support may be needed for that student in math, language arts, or science, whether some support may be needed, and then level three, of course, less support may be needed. And we generally took these three level supports and matched them up to the NJSLA level supports, which you can see, you know, under each one. For instance, level one, we kind of equate that with a student not meeting the expectations or partially meeting the expectations, which is how it's designated with the NJSLA assessment in the spring. Level two, we kind of see that as approaching expectations for the grade level, and of course, level three, we feel like students have met or exceeded the expectations. And as we move through some of the charts that I show you, that might become a little bit more clear as to what we're talking about when we look at the results. The next handful of slides are going to take you through each grade level rather quickly. There's a summary sheet at the end which kind of encompasses each one of these grade levels. But what we like to focus on, just as an overall snapshot of performance, is looking at the top two sections of each one of those bar graphs there. The 59 and the 28 for the English Language Arts performance in grade four, and then on the right side is the math. And each one of these you'll see going from left to right, it's ELA and math. And generally, when we look at those percentages, we like to see, all right, how many of our students are either performing, approaching, or meeting or exceeding expectations? And just as a quick summation of the grade four, we see that 87% of our students have met, approached, or exceeded expectations in ELA, and 88% of them have approached, met, or exceeded expectations in math. Those are the kinds of numbers that we typically used to see when we give our spring assessments. So we feel pretty good about the overall percentages that are in those categories. So the bottom numbers, of course, are the percentage of students where strong support is needed. So obviously, 15%, 12%, you know, it's the smallest number of qualifying for those students. Again, grade level five, as you can see, similar results. And you'll notice as we go through this, most of the grade levels have scored out, you know, plus or minus a few percentage points of each other. For instance, 91% of our students here met or exceeded expectations or are approaching those expectations in language arts, and 85% of them in math have approached, met, or exceeded those expectations. And again, as we move through to grade six in English Language Arts on the left and math on the right, again, you see similar percentages, 87% approaching, meeting, or exceeding expectations in grade six ELA, and 79% of students approaching, meeting, or exceeding expectations in grade six math. Again, pretty consistent, plus or minus in each grade level. Again, in grade seven, ELA and math, we have 87% in ELA approaching and meeting or exceeding expectations. And in grade seven math, we have 83% meeting or exceeding expectations. And again, on our summary slide at the end, you'll see, you know, this in more organized format. Grade eight, again, pretty consistent. Those numbers at the bottom remained relatively the same too as we moved through. 87% of students approached, met, or exceeded expectations based on this assessment in ELA, and in math, 89% of our eighth grade students approached, met, or exceeded expectations. Now, science was administered in three grade levels. On the top left there is grade six. Moving over to the right, directly to the right is grade nine, and at the bottom, those are our grade 12 students. I'll talk a little bit more about those performances as we get to our summary slide. But as you can see, their science is a little bit different because it measures multiple years. So grade six measures some of the core concepts in grades three, four, and five. So when the sixth graders took that, it was measuring some of those core curriculum areas for the past few years. The grade nine science encompassed science skills and concepts from sixth, seventh, and eighth grade science. And then grade 12 probably had the largest grade span of concepts that it was covering. Ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade science concepts were covered in that assessment. So science provided some additional challenges for students. But nonetheless, we still had 83% of our grade six science approach, meet, or exceed expectations, 81% in our ninth grade science performance level, and 58%, which is on a little bit the lower side, which we can talk about in a little while with our 12th grade students when they were given the Start Strong science assessment. Moving on to Algebra I, which is the top left, Algebra II on the top right, and then Geometry on the bottom. And again, algebra is a little bit on the lower side, which we'll talk about in a minute. We have some reasons why we think there might be a larger level of more support needed in those areas. And then, of course, Geometry on the top right, and, I'm getting top right, Algebra II, I mean Geometry on the bottom, on the bottom right. 49% in Algebra I approached or met or exceeded expectations, 86% approached or met expectations in Geometry, and 80% approached, met, or exceeded expectations in Geometry. And here is a summary slide that I was talking about. I'll ask Mrs. Woodring to chime in on a couple of these areas. You know, one of the things that jumped out of this here, relatively consistent scores across all grade levels. But a couple that jump out would be the Science 12 at 58%, which is significantly lower than the other areas, and also the Algebra I, which is at 49%. I will speak a little bit to the Algebra I. You know, those students who were administered that exam were ninth graders. Those students did take Algebra I in eighth grade, you know, many of our students do, many of our accelerated students. So that number, traditionally, algebra is a little bit of an area that districts struggle with, including ours. But the students who were administered that aren't considered our strongest math students, the good math students, but not our really excel students. So we think that number is a little bit lower than normal because it's not a variety of students that are taking that test, it's more of a homogenous group of students taking that test. I'll let Andrea talk a little bit about, she wants to, you know, talk a little bit more about the Algebra I, or at least some thoughts and ideas of why the Science 12 is a little bit lower than we would expect.
So as Dr. Shorter said, in algebra, those, you took the test for the course that you are currently in. So Algebra I students had just begun their Algebra I course when they took this. So the standards were based on Math 8, whereas the students at Lazar last year who were in algebra and honors algebra were actually taking the geometry assessment for Start Strong. So, you know, some of our students who have some challenges in math, a lot of times wait until high school to take Algebra I. So we do usually see a little bit of a dip between our eighth grade Algebra I scores and our ninth grade Algebra I scores even on the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments. As far as 12th grade science, I believe part of this was motivation. They know that the assessment didn't really matter for them as far as graduation requirements. And also, it is a lot of science, and some of that science for our students was taken as a sixth grader, which is the last time that they were taking anything that had to do with earth science. As you can recall, we changed it a couple of years ago, and students are not required to take earth science as a freshman, although the comprehensive science assessment that the state uses does incorporate, a third of it is life science, a third of it is earth science, and a third of it is physical science. So as Dr. Shorter had said earlier, it's a lot of content that some of these students might not have had in recent years. So I think the combination of, you know, they're 12th graders, and they know that it was a formative assessment and not something that they needed for graduation, as well as the content that they had many years ago, was a factor in the 58%.
Okay, thank you. The state requires us as a district to profile subgroups of students. So anytime that we administer standardized tests, we do profile various subgroups, and we do focus in on subgroups. So I do want to profile students with disabilities category, and these percentages here represent students who approached, met, or exceeded expectations. And I laid that out across the grade levels in a summative fashion. And this is something that obviously we share with teaching staff, case managers, and natural CDs are a little on the lower side because we're still, you know, providing a lot of supports for students in these areas through our special education program. So we have the data, we have the results. The state released this data a few weeks after our students took the test, so now what do we do with it? I mentioned earlier that this gives us one data point that is added to and contributes to our overall data picture of each individual student. So the first thing we did, we got it out there. We got it out to the principals, the supervisors, we turned it to the teachers, and they looked at individual test questions, what type of questions do students struggle with, what type of standards did we find that maybe students didn't perform or we feel like they mastered from the prior year? How are students responding? What does that mean? These were all looked at at grade level meetings and department meetings to start developing a roadmap about how we're going to perform moving forward and filling some of these gaps within the units that teachers present to their students. So we started that right away, and that's ongoing. You know, again, with all the other assessments that we provide our students, this is a piece of that puzzle. The next steps, after we've kind of figured all that out, we do have some funds through grants, S R 2 and S R 3 funds that could be used for a lot of different things, and not only the Start Strong identified as needed, but a lot of other things that we as a district and as schools determine that we could benefit from. And this is just a sampling of some things that we're using those funds for to help support our kids, to help give them that additional tools and supports to, you know, perhaps make up for some of the lost time that they had due to the pandemic over the last couple of years. So those are a few things that we're excited about either implementing currently or will be implementing in the future to support our students. Any questions on any of this? Mr. O'Brien?
Three questions. Okay.
I don't have a microphone.
Going forward, will this test specifically, or other tests generally, give you more information about the allegations that pandemic has had on learning generally? There's a lot being written about this. People that are in the schools notice it. Will that help you assess what might be needed?
Yeah, this assessment was designed to help us do that. And it was, there was useful parts of this. As I really want to emphasize, those is one part of the puzzle. You know, a lot of the other assessments and tools that teachers are working with students, you know, help inform us of what those gaps potentially were. I don't want to, you know, I know that Mrs. Woodring, you know, talked about the brick and community a lot about this, but we feel pretty good about how our students fare through the pandemic as far as, you know, the content area and the skills, a lot of them maintain those skills and demonstrating those skills. And I think some of these assessments prove that. But of course, there was a little, you know, less time, there was a strong social-emotional impact. So we know that there were some things lost there that we have to work with our students to get back. And this helps us do that, as well as a lot of the other assessments and programs that we put in place.
I just thought of a fourth question. There was a section about test questions, about how, is that for teachers to adjust questions that they will put on teacher-made tests, or was that about test questions in this test?
Yeah.
Yeah, which?
Yeah, which, we got to see the test questions from the test.
Okay.
And that gives us a sneak peek into, you know, the student did poorly on a certain question, that's revealing about maybe what the gap is. So we can use those questions to help inform our instruction to fill those gaps moving forward.
Will that impact teacher-made tests to help them make tests that will fill in that gap maybe?
Yeah, I think, I think based on some of the assessment and look at the individual test questions that students may struggle in, I think that informs teachers with the idea of, you know, they struggled in that area, so perhaps I'm going to assess that on a test and construct questions that'll address that area.
Okay. Getting there, you talked about subgroups. I'm very curious because I see kids, you know, you categorize kids in certain different ways, right or wrong. When you're talking about the subgroups, I don't know what you're talking about. You talked about learning disabilities or something like that.
Yeah, one of the things that the state of New Jersey requires whenever we administer standardized tests is to look at the overall performance of your students. But they also require districts to zero in on subgroups like students with disabilities classifications. ELL students, we are required to look at, we are required to look at all of the ethnic breakdown in performance of students also, to see if there's any large gaps there that have to be addressed. Economically disadvantaged students, there's those categories where it breaks it down based on socioeconomic status. I think we hit all of them, Andrea.
Okay, so there are economic factors, there are possibly ethnic factors, and disabilities.
And ELL, English Language Arts also.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's helpful. And my fourth question that came up, is there some sort of an assessment that we do at some point which measures emotional, you talked about emotional impact, is there some sort of assessment at some time that we do that measures that?
No, not that I'm aware of. You know, a lot of the data that we collect on social-emotional wellbeing of students, there's a lot of anecdotal information in conversations and meetings that our guidance counselors have, our case managers have, conversations that our teachers may be involved in in the classrooms, you know, whether or not students complete various surveys about how they're feeling and things like that.
Because there's been a lot of discussion about emotional impact of the pandemic.
Yeah, and that's been a significant focus. Andrea, can you speak to a few things that we're doing to really address those areas overall? That's a big piece, it's not just the academic piece, we're focusing on social emotional perspective.
Thank you. I'm very impressed with your presentation.
I see no other questions, based on Andrea, thank you. Your presentation, I think you might have a way to say, I think you really can send this out with our update last week. So please, if you have any questions, feel free to call Andrea or take.
Can I just add a couple of things, just a couple of comments on pandemic circumstances? I know some parents have reached out to me with regard to quarantine guidelines. Obviously, I did send a message out to the school community last Thursday that those guidelines have been revised, and they have now reverted back to the 10-day quarantine maximum as opposed to the 14-day. I have had a conversation with Montel Township Health Officer. Some parents have reached out suggesting that perhaps the district should consider going virtual. Our discussion indicated that based on the numbers, the cases that we're experiencing, that really is not warranted at this time. I know parents have also reached out to me with regard to a test this day program. The CDC has discussed that at the present time. Such a program has not yet been approved by the New Jersey Department of Health. Yesterday, in his COVID briefing, Governor Murphy did indicate that a pilot test this day program is being worked on, and they hope to be able to implement that sometime in early January. That concludes my remarks, Mr. Brown.
Thank you very much. It's an opportunity for anybody to follow up, have any questions on agenda items? Please come forward to her and just tell us your name, please.
Hi, everybody. Nick Conterso, Cedar Hill. Just two follow-up questions on the Strong Start, perhaps directed at Dr. Shorter. One, first question, as far as the skill level of the test, how has it changed, if at all, from, let's say, 2019 to where it is today?
Well, this is the first time rollout of this. Generally, we take the NJSLA, which is a much more comprehensive, multiple-day assessment, a lot more questions. That's our typical standardized assessment in the spring. That was canceled due to the pandemic. The federal law requires that districts provide a standardized assessment each year. So the state implied for a waiver last spring. Essentially, in layman's terms, if, you know, working on a deal where if we cancel the spring assessment, we can offer this fall assessment that will help get, give us a better understanding of where our kids are in the current class that they're in, which is a little bit different than prior year standardized testing. And the two aren't connected at all. You can't really compare the two tests, and, you know, it was a much shorter test. It tested the prior year's knowledge and information, and it's not really comparable to prior assessments that we've given in the past that the state.
There's no real baseline against.
No.
Okay, thank you. The second question, you mentioned that you're focusing on the social and emotional wellbeing of students. Could you elaborate on that? You know, how was that being done?
I'll defer to Mrs. Woodring, she's heavily involved in that, so she wants to speak to that.
So we, as part of the federal grants, there is a component and an allocation that we must use for mental health. So in collaboration with our Director of School Counseling and the school counselors and the administrators throughout the district, we have brought in Lifelines, which is a suicide prevention curriculum, but it also speaks to the mental health of students. We are looking, we have, we're purchasing and we're using some surveys that will assess students' perceptions of how they feel in certain situations, and the counselors are going into the classrooms of the elementary schools and discussing a lot of this. And then the final piece is, we're looking to partner with an outside. And then the final piece is we're looking to partner with an outside service that will be able to provide in-house counseling to some of our students who we feel are most at risk for maybe having to, you know, leave school or get professional help. So we're trying to be as proactive as possible, identifying the students based on what they're saying to us, what parents have provided information on, and then help them to, help them to be able to, you know, be in school with us and be strong, resilient children.
Thank you. Anything else on the agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for items I to M. And we have three addendums, J3, K8, K9.
Still moved.
Here we go. Anybody have a question on item I?
I see our team tried to skip a little.
We have more on the table.
Let me finish here when you come back to the later. Any questions on I? J? K? L? M? Seeing none, we'll all follow up. Mr. Slump, please.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Dr. Cortolino?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes, it's seen on check number 1744.
Mrs. Fanoff?
Yes.
Dr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
You're going to switch up the order so you can all. Business administration report, Mr. Slump?
No report.
Thank you. Finance and facilities, Karen?
Thank you. The facilities and finance committee met briefly for this meeting. Mrs. Slump went over the status of construction and technology projects as well as proposed projects for the coming year or two. Things at the high school are being finished up. Their work will begin soon on our sister schools in terms of new windows and exteriors. A lot of maintenance going on. And regarding some of the facilities, we're looking at, or Mrs. Slump has suggested that the January 18th meeting, she'll provide somewhat more comprehensive update regarding capital projects and what our goals are for our facilities over the next couple of years. So stay tuned to the January 18th meeting.
Thank you, Karen. Correcting data?
No report.
Politics today?
No report.
Communication? Safety and security?
No report.
Eligent of the school boards, Karen?
Thank you. On December 11th, I attended and chaired the legislative committee meeting. At that meeting, as is the responsibility of the Legislative Committee of New Jersey School Boards, we adopted a draft advocacy agenda. This covers a two-year period. It will need to be approved by the Board of Directors. These are broad statements in no particular order. In fact, they're listed in alphabetical order on the advocacy agenda and include items like accountability, advocacy, funding, governance, school district staffing, special education due to achievement, vocational education. And under each of those categories are items that New Jersey School Boards believes are important to advocate for. So for example, in advocacy, to expand and strengthen the statewide grassroots network for both state and federal advocacy efforts, underfunding, advocate for amendments to the school funding formula that advance New Jersey School Board policy on school finance. So a whole host of things that New Jersey School Boards, their belief statements, and will advocate for over the next two years. And it's, obviously, it's a fluid document. If something comes up that doesn't fall neatly into any of these categories, whether New Jersey School Boards advocates for it or against it, it will do the works. At the meeting, we also went over many, many bills that are either signed or moving through the legislature. And I would encourage my colleagues to just visit the website of New Jersey School Boards, and there'll be a whole host of bills that have either been signed or are moving through the legislature. And the last thing is there is a new publication by New Jersey School Boards. It's called Fundamentals of School Board Membership, and it can be found on the New Jersey School Boards website. It's basically a primer, but it's good for any school board member, no matter how long you've served or how long your tenure is. It covers things like who does what in public school governance, the board superintendent relationship, good public relations, legislation and the role of the board member. So it's just a real, really good, concise primer on being a school board member. So I would just recommend it to anyone interested. And that concludes my report.
Mr. O'Brien?
I have two questions. Why don't you give your report? Will we, will we get copies of that or do we have to request? Do you have to fly?
Yeah, if you request it, you can certainly have a copy. They'll mail it to you, or you can find it online.
And the question was, the concept of tests and stay discussed at that legislative meeting that's in. Yeah, my report, we have not met Mars County School Board since my last report.
Interchange services?
Yes, we met. We did have a couple. A lot of the meeting was about catching up on some of the open issues that we had in previous years. So in the previous meeting, we had talked about that there's a lot of nursing openings for the non-public schools that they were trying to find nurses for. And finally, the whole, the open spots have been filled. So there are currently 36 nurses serving 41 non-public schools within the operational area. So that's good for the. A second issue was the emergency aid to non-public schools. And this was federal funds to, from the Department of Education to help reimburse non-public schools for COVID pandemic-related issues and closures and making sure that students can continue to learn in the non-public schools. It would provide for makeup services, after-school service, technology to enhance learning opportunities, and physical improvements to implement social distancing and sanitation of facilities. The grant was announced a couple of meetings ago, but they finally have instructions about it received. So they're going to start with the go-ahead. They are working with the non-public schools now to get them to submit their requests for whatever supplies that they may need. And the ESC will process the payments, process the purchase, and the ESC will get reimbursed from the Department of Education. And the ESC does, will get reimbursed for the administrative aspects of handling, handling the fund, which is about $4.5 million for the ESC. And finally, the railman for children, a volunteer group from the New Jersey Transit, took the Central Park students on a train ride from Danville to visit Annapolis. And both kids had a really fun time on the train ride. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions, Mike? Mr. Palmer, verbal.
There's a meeting last week which I was unable to attend, but my understanding is that primarily the thing that was discussed was the winding down, the spending down of grant money to include educational materials for our students, particularly the elementary
Say that again, winding down?
Spending of funds.
Oh, and the, where, the school?
Well, the DSC has funds that needs to be spent down. And one of the things that they're looking at is materials for the elementary schools in particular.
Thank you. Athletics, Mr. O'Brien?
Next meeting is in January.
Cedar Hill, last time?
Their next meeting is in January.
Cedar Hill, Valley, New York?
Their next meeting is in January.
Christine, Mason?
No report.
Palmer? Mr. Palmer, will not?
Yeah, there was a meeting last, we scheduled for last week, it was canceled at the last second. Just wanted to schedule for January.
And Lazar?
January 10th, our next meeting.
And I bet hospitals, January 2nd?
24th. January 24th.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, we'll go through the agenda. Any old business of the board members? General board comment and new business? Public participation, an opportunity for the public to make comments and educational items, and important to allow members of the public to speak. All members of the board pressed, and that ought to be followed. Any members of the public that would like to be heard on any item? Mr. Woodrow?
Good evening, thank you. Scott Mariano, Oxbury resident, MTHS history teacher, MTA president. I'd like to thank the central administration and the Board of Education for helping guide us safely through another successful calendar year. I could not let 2021 come to a close without expressing to you my respect and my gratitude, my appreciation for all the work that you do. I look forward to continuing to work with you in 2022. Until we meet again, I wish you and your loved ones a very happy, healthy, and safe holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott. And we thank you and your association for everything you do for our kids. And we also would like to wish you and your family and your colleagues a happy and healthy holiday season. Thank you.
Hey, everybody. Mark Mansour, 13 Hollister Road, Toaca. Thank you for having us all here tonight. Dr. Rohter, you kind of touched on something that I was going to bring up, since I was here anyways, I may as well just say it. It was about the meeting that took place last week in Middletown, New Jersey, where they adopted a new policy in terms of, you know, similar to what you said about the test to, I forget the word, test to. Test to stay, thank you. You know, I get nervous up here. But I was wondering, you know, if it'd be possible for our board members to kind of, you know, possibly take a look at that resolution and see if it is something that could work here in Montpel or not. I know you were saying you kind of already talked to some parents and things of that nature. So I know there is a great number of parents who would at least, you know, appreciate maybe the board taking a minute in closed session or whenever you have an opportunity over email to kind of discuss that. And for those parents in the audience who aren't familiar with the policy, it was passed December 14th over in Middletown. It said, "In school, close contacts of COVID-19 positive individuals shall be notified of their status as a close contact." They're not going to be excluded from school or work. It's kind of more of an optional thing. And those ones who do choose to be out would be out for up to 10 days from the day of the close contacts. And, you know, designated close contacts shall monitor for COVID symptoms still due to testing, things of that nature after, I think it was five days. This means a little small here. Yeah, five days after contact. So I just know that with all the emails that come out, especially that I get from Dr. Raj from the Cedar Hill schools in terms of, you know, you know, I know it's not an overwhelming amount where you have to go virtual. I'm glad the kids don't have to go virtual right now. Being, you know, an education myself, I know that's, you know, kind of a tough thing for a lot of kids and the teachers and for you guys for all the planning, things of that nature. So I was just wondering if the board and administration could kind of touch on that when they have an opportunity, maybe after the holidays, things of that nature, to kind of discuss that. That's all I really had for you today. Thank you for your time, and I wish everybody to celebrate Christmas and Merry Christmas or happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments and happy holidays to you and your family as well. Is there anyone else with this opportunity?
Hi, everybody. Some questions and some comments today. Nick Conterso, Cedar Hill. As it relates to close contact, is there any information or statistics that you've come up with for those students who were identified as close contact and had to test negative to get back into school, but they actually tested positive?
Do you have any other questions? If there's any opportunity to respond to the conclusion, if you'd like to.
Sure. So my comment around that is because my son was identified as a close contact. He did test negative, as we suspected. He was fine the entire time. But, you know, the concerning part was that when it came time for him to go back to school, you know, he was getting ready to go out to meet the bus. He turns to my wife and I and he said, "You know, Dad, should I stay away from people today so this doesn't happen again?" And, you know, just to kind of repeat that, he asked me if he should stay away from kids and teachers and whoever's in his school so he's not in that situation again. And needless to say, I was very taken aback by it, you know, but you don't really understand what goes through kids' minds until they're in a situation like that. And, you know, he says something like, you know, pretty profound like that. So it was, it was very concerning. And, you know, my point really is that there seems to be a lot of focus on COVID and prevention of it, and I get it, it's very important. But, you know, there also needs to be some attention to the effects this is having on child's wellbeing, the disruptions that they're seeing, you know, in education, be it, you know, being home from school randomly for no reason aside from being a close contact. And, you know, when you're home virtually, sometimes, you know, you're dealing with the distractions of being from home. My son was home, you know, the doorbell's ringing, you know, that distracts the other students who are, you know, my son's in school and other kids have, you know, animals in the back, dogs in the background, things like that, which I get it, you know, this is all something that we're living through. But I just feel as though, you know, he's my son, the fourth grader, and this is a time when positive habits are created and positive routines are created, but unfortunately, negative ones can be created as well. So I'm just concerned that, you know, Montpel's focus has become a little bit too narrow in just focusing on the COVID prevention, which again, I'm not diminishing that by any means, but I think there needs to be something more proactive so that, you know, kids are getting the proper education in the right positive environment, not necessarily reactive with, you know, mental health support coming in after the fact.
Go ahead, do you have another question?
I do, appreciate your time. Just a comment on Dr. Rohter, your decision by letter that, you know, talked, spoke to quarantine procedures, specifically stating how close contact, if they were vaccinated, could go back to school immediately versus if they were not vaccinated, they had to quarantine. And, you know, I find that pretty disturbing. You know, in our, in our house, we teach everybody to, we teach my son that everybody's equal as, you know, I was taught growing up. And candidly, one of the things that I really appreciate about Montpel School District from Montessori through fourth grade, how there is that mixing of heritages and backgrounds and everyone is treated equally. But when this came out, you know, I was, you know, I just felt as though you're teaching that, you know, if you're, if you are vaccinated, you can go back into school, and if you're not, you know, you can't go back to the school.
I don't think that's for an age, but.
Well, I understand, but that's how I interpret it, you know, and I'm not trying to be, you know.
Why don't you let her respond?
Combative at all. Sure.
Okay. With regard to your first question in terms of the numbers.
Okay, um, with regard to your first question in terms of the numbers of students who have been quarantined that have ultimately tested positive, I would say those numbers are, I don't have specific statistics in front of me, I would say those numbers are extremely low. Um, uh, you know, the, the numbers are, are exploding in New Jersey in terms of the number of cases, and while I certainly don't, would not want students to feel apprehensive about being in school, I think our message from the beginning of the pandemic has been to emphasize several things as being really critical in terms of limiting the spread of the disease, and one of those things is social distancing. So while certain students probably are drawn to want to be close to their classmates, it is, it is very important that they maintain their distance while we're in these kinds of circumstances, and that they wear their masks, and that they wash their hands or sanitize them through rooming. Those are, are just the parameters that we're working under at the present time. Um, with regard to those parameters, um, I, you know, cannot emphasize strongly enough that the guidelines that we're working with come to us from the New Jersey Department of Health. We have adhered to those guidelines since the start of the pandemic. The differentiation between vaccinated and unvaccinated in terms of what they're able to do after they're a close contact is nothing that I have created. This is part of the parameters that have been given to us by the New Jersey Department of Health. So any issues that you have with that, with those determinations, I would suggest that you address them to New Jersey Department of Health. That's where that comes from. Um, yeah, I, that's it.
Okay, Nick, I'll then answer your question. Okay? Thank you.
I did also want to, uh, respond to Mr. Mansoor's, uh, comment. Interestingly enough, uh, as part of my discussion with the Montville County Health Officer today, we did discuss the Middletown situation. He had actually spoken to the Middletown Health Officer and confirmed my suspicion because when I read their resolution, nowhere in the resolution does it indicate that that decision by the board was being made in consultation with the Middletown Department of Health, which we've all been told, any big decisions that school districts are making with regard to parameters or going virtual or anything of that nature should be made in consultation with the local health department. That did not happen. Um, our local health official does not recommend anything of the sort in terms of eliminating, uh, any kind of quarantine period for close contact. Uh, as I indicated previously, um, the New Jersey Department of Health is exploring a test-to-stay program. We'll have to see what those parameters look like when they roll that out in January.
Thank you, Karen. Seeing none other, I would like to take this out to the bank, everybody. Do you have any comments? Okay.
This is my first time at one of these board education meetings.
Did you, uh, hit the microphone?
Hello? Yeah, this is my first time at one of these meetings. Welcome. Thank you very much, and I thank you for having me so we could attend. I'm just gonna follow up with this gentleman said.
Did you identify yourself?
Sure, my name's Ed Buldes. Uh, I live in Pine Grove. I don't know what other information you need.
That's good.
But, uh, just to follow up with this gentleman, uh, was inquiring about, about if a child has been in close proximity to somebody that was infected by COVID, the vaccinated could stay in school, the unvaccinated cannot. And I believe you said the New Jersey Department of Health, uh, that was the guidelines from them?
Mm-hmm.
But is that for, do you have to follow those guidelines, or is it up to the board? Cause, you know what I'm saying? Or is it just a suggestion, that's what should be done, and each school district has their own, uh, possible, uh, guidelines to enforce it or not to enforce it?
I, I think there are two factors at work there. I think the first is, um, the guidance from the local health official, which in this case supports that approach, um, would not support us deviating from that approach. And the second part of that is a legal aspect that, um, you know, could potentially open the board up to additional liability should they choose not to follow these guidelines that have been provided for.
So it's a liability issue?
There's a liability risk there.
So...
He felt like, um, after the mask, when children signed the COVID, and somebody decided not to, and they were told they had to, and they didn't stay there, so...
Well, thank you for bringing that, bringing that up regarding the mask. I wasn't even gonna go there, but if anybody has any scientific peer studies that prove that mask can eliminate or possibly reduce the risk of transmission and contraction of such a virus, if you could please provide that to me or the parents? But any, any scientific peer view?
Right, right now, we're just following the law.
Okay.
We're following the law.
So... Okay. Whatever it is that we're probably after.
All right, so, um, back, yeah, I mean, I'll try with the best now, but, um, back to the vaccinated and unvaccinated children, can anybody here explain why a vaccinated child could return to school after being in close contact, even they could transmit the disease just like unvaccinated?
That is, is not ours to defend. That, that, that question should be addressed to the New Jersey Board of Health.
Did anybody address that from the Montville School District with the Board of Health? But does it, does anybody in the audience or anybody here can answer that question? If somebody could transmit the disease, vaccinated or unvaxxed, how does that prevent transmission of the disease within the school? If a vaccinated child could transmit it and a, or unvaccinated? Does that make any sense to anybody?
You're, you're asking questions that, uh, I don't wanna say...
No, I'm asking the people on the panel, can you...
I'm not a scientist.
No, I'm not asking your sci...
I, I, I've listened to the people on TV, the panel. As Dr. Rohter said, we're obligated to follow the direction of the Department of Health. I, I look at tests, sometimes someone will get a COVID test on a Thursday so they can go to a party or wedding on Friday. Is that, is it gonna be good? I don't know. I don't know what the parameters are, that's why we have these guidelines to follow, and it takes all of us hours, sir. Now, if you have anything else, we'll be happy to listen to it, but our hands are tied on this.
All right, I was, I was just asking, if both unvaccinated and vaccinated could transmit disease, why is one excluded from attending school? That's it. If nobody could answer me, I guess nobody knows the correct answer. It was really heartbreaking. I take my son to karate today. He's like, "Oh, Dad, my, my mask." He's like, "Oh, I forgot, I don't have to wear that karate, I'm not in school." He's like, "I'm free, Dad, I'm free." You know how that makes me feel?
Well...
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Happy holidays.
Hello? Uh, Dr. Pete Walsh, Toaca. Uh, quick question, just, uh, not really based on the Middletown thing. I know West Milford decreased their, um, distance to three feet from a contact standpoint. Do we?
I don't have any idea about that.
Okay. Um, do we know if it's still from the state six feet, or is it three to six, and they're just choosing three and we're choosing six?
Uh...
From a close contact standpoint?
Yeah, close contact is three to six.
Okay. So they're, so I guess they're choosing to do three feet? I'm, I'm not arguing, I'm just asking...
I can't speak to what other districts are doing, and I haven't heard that from you, don't know any of the details. I can respond to that.
Okay, so I'm just asking if anybody could reach out to the state to see if it's three to six?
The purpose of the public comment period is for unit statements or comments that the board and the administration can hear. It is not a period of debate and interrogation of...
I'm not trying to debate. I appreciate your time. I'm just asking if it's still six feet or if other districts can do three feet because it's been changed by the state. I'm just asking if you know if it's been changed by the state.
We don't know what other districts are doing.
I'm asking about the state, not the districts.
I think Dr. Rohter sent something out within the last couple of days about this to everybody, you know?
I, I didn't address the, uh, the, uh...
That's it. Just wondering, thank you.
All right, since there's none other, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Before that, we'd like to wish everyone here a happy, healthy holiday season, and I guess we'll see everyone next year. Motion to adjourn, please.
So...
Second. Ball fair?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.